Oh, hi everyone. Welcome back to Too Far Gone Media. Mark here and you know today guys, I'm just gonna tell you, I'm gonna show you something pretty disgusting from the council, the Ottawa City Council. And just remember, I'm gonna lose my cool, but I am not an elected official. Okay, these people are elected to take care of intense situations. And let me tell you, it is fucking nuts.
Can I just express my frustration with everything on behalf of our community? I think there was a lot of hope yesterday, Chief, when you outlined the surge in contained strategy. And the sense of urgency to get this thing under control. Despite that, I think people are expressing frustration because they're not seeing any results. To hear that we need legal advice on what can be done to clamp down on some of the behaviors is it's baffling. There are, there is criminal behavior happening down there. And I think if we could see the officers in the neighborhoods, have we arrested, have we gone in and arrested the people who are caught like, who are causing trouble at night?
Okay, so we got a serious problem here because it looks like she's looking for something that's not there. She keeps saying that there's crimes happening down there. There's always crimes happening downtown, but there's nothing happening within the Freedom Convoy. Everything there is peaceful. That's why the police have not been able to do a goddamn thing. So you guys really pay attention to this Carol Anne Meehan because she is a fucking nut job. You just keep watching, keep watching.
If we could see some concrete things happening, maybe people wouldn't be so frustrated. We see Quebec City taking action. We see Toronto taking action. I mean, obviously with hindsight, looking what's going on here. But at the same time, you need officers, we're getting more officers. But we need to be told if there's a concrete plan in place that we can start arresting people. How do we know that things are gonna blow up if we haven't done anything except monitor and keep the peace? This, this can't continue.
Okay, so she just said that they've been keeping the peace. But at the same time, she's contradicting her own words, saying that there's crimes happening. Now she's asking why there hasn't been any arrests because they don't know if it's gonna create any. She wants, she, she's literally saying that the police have not arrested anybody yet. So they don't know how the crowd would react. You need lawful intent to arrest somebody. That is the problem here. She is trying to create something out of nothing. This psycho fucking bitch man, oh, I'm very sorry, but this is disgusting. And I'm gonna play the same game she is. So let's check this out somewhere.
Day eight. Can I just say that knowing that we haven't been in touch with the NCC to decide about policing Confederation Park is mind boggling to me. Can we, do we, have we not put all the levels of government and the decision makers in our room to determine? Because this is an unprecedented situation, that we have to take unprecedented decisions and move. Because we're giving it the signal to all these people who are coming into town, that it's a free for all. You know, they can take tires off trucks, they can put up buildings, they can bring in fuel, they can take over our stadium. We've given them the signal that it's a come and party in our, in our town. And, and if I'm expressing frustration, not just as a board member at a city councillor, but as, as a resident of the city to see our colleagues and our fellow residents downtown being so hard put upon. I believe it when I hear my city councillors, the city councillors downtown say there, there's no police presence in the neighborhoods and people have been left on their own. We want to, we want to know what the plan is. We want to know concretely what is going to happen. Are we gonna start making arrests? Or do we just wait for more intelligence? I'm assuming other cities are getting intelligence, but they're still taking concrete action. So please, I apologize if I'm off base here as a board member. But we're not getting answers. We're not getting the answers that we require here. Please, I'm begging you.
So she wants the police to go in and forcefully arrest people without lawful intent. You cannot do that. You cannot do that. You need intent, you need a crime. People peacefully protesting is not a crime. This is Canada and this is the nation's capital. So if you're gonna protest, you're gonna protest at the Parliament Hill. And that is what is happening. We got nice, nice, kind people over there. Like holy shit, all you gotta do is go there. And you will see through all of these people's lies. Well, not all of them. They're not all against what's happening. But her, she is insane. So let's keep going. She is begging the cops. That's pretty damn bad.
Done here.
So we are, we are trying to abide by all of these things because there's no point in making arrests and, and a whole lot of effort and energy if it's only going to be tossed out later in court because we've, we haven't abided by it. We, we know these things from past protests, from other people's decisions, from, from what's happened through the courts. What I will say is places like Quebec City, Toronto, they have learned from us. Absolutely. We're not saying we didn't make any mistakes. We're saying we are learning as we go on a lot of these things and we are doing the best we can. Every one of us is.
This party central, she wants to dismantle this party central. I want you guys to pay attention to her scratching her nose away every couple of minutes, just like somebody who's been on fucking cocaine all day. And you know what? She's kind of acting like she's been on cocaine all fucking day. But let's keep watching this crazy ass bitch.
Cannot, can we not get the NCC to give us approval to go onto Confederation Park and dismantle this core, this, this party central?
We have that and I can tell you that we have made progress in the last three hours while I've been on calls with people. That's happening. I can't tell you exactly what's happening right now because I can't be there. But I can tell you that our folks have been, they haven't abandoned the, the goal here. They are working through it methodically and in, by lawful powers that we have. And we, nothing has changed. We have, as I said, have not been granted all kinds of new powers because this has happened in our city.
So everybody, everybody has power in this city except the police and residents. That's what, that's the message that we're giving to the protesters in the city. That's, I'm sorry, that's what. For the last, not just myself, I'm speaking on behalf of very frustrated residents. We appreciate everything that the police are doing. We do. And I understand that they're exhausted, but this is day eight. And we need to know that this is going to end. And right now, I think, everybody, I think if, if you're listening to this, I think there's nothing that indicates that we're not going, we're not in for more, more days of this. So.
Okay.
I'll just stay quiet for now.
How she's passionate, but if you keep watching her body language as she goes on, she is completely emotionally involved in this. This, she's not mad because there's a petition going on or, sorry, peaceful protest. She's mad because what she wants, nothing else but what she wants is not happening the way she wants it to. Okay? Her district is Napeen. Downtown ain't got fuck all to do with you. Okay, let's keep going.
I apologize. Yes, I am passionate, but I have to be on behalf of everybody that, that is feeling very, very helpless right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Man, Members.
Did Member Man want to hear about the arrests? I just wasn't sure if that was the end of her question.
Um, yes, I'd love to hear about who's been arrested. And I'd like to know what's gonna happen tonight when there's bonfires and more parties and more honking. I'd like to know what's gonna happen.
Okay, so let's go right there. Bonfires. There has not been any fucking bonfires. There's a cop every eight feet. She wants more cops, but there's one every eight feet already. And that, just that, every 20 feet, there's a fucking huddle of them. She is completely mad. Let's keep watching the psychopath.
Okay, thank you.
Now I did skip a little bit here because this is like a five hour boring ass fucking story.
I will ask this question. I just got some information. And it is that, could I ask David White about part four of the National Defense Act called Aid of the Civil Power? Which states if there is a riot or disturbance, the feds.
Incredibly intelligent. And he is trying to defer as much as possible to have a peaceful, like he's literally stopping the council from overriding the police and directly making them attack us without civil rights. Like you'll, you'll, you guys will see, like this is one fucking messed up bitch.
And send in the military. It's, I guess it's not the same as the War Measures Act, but because it is, this has to do with a federal issue and the protesters have, are taking.
Just so everybody's aware, the Federal War Measures Act is her wanting to bring in the military. That's right. She wants those fucking protesters dead. She wants them smashed. She wants them taken out by the military.
With the feds and provincial policies.
Let's keep going.
Does anybody know about this civil, the National Defense Act? Can we, can somebody look about that? Or David, Mr. White?
Chair, happy to review. Obviously, you know, the invoking federal powers is something that is going to be exclusively within the authority of the federal government.
Okay. Okay, so there seems to be, there could possibly be a tool there. Chair, I'm wondering if we can make a direction either to you as a chair of this board to reach out to the federal government. We have several ministers who are representative Ottawa Riddings, Minister Forte. We also have opposition members from this area that we can convene, ask the federal, the prime minister to get involved in this. The premier of the province and everybody in a position of power to make this a top priority that we come up with a solution to this. We can't allow this to continue for another week in our city. Would a direction be in order?
Probably not necessary, but certainly if you would like to direct me to do that, I think I will do it anyway. What I heard today is that we should be asking everyone who has power to act, to act now because we are in a crisis situation. And so there are other levels of government that have more power than we have that could enact pieces of legislation that could set curfews in place and that could reduce the rift to the public. And we need to ask every single level of government to push the levers that they have that will most effectively bring about the end to this. So if you want to give me a direction, you can, but I think I understand it.
I, I would like to give you a direction and I'm hoping that the other members of the board will, will support me in that. The prime minister has to make a statement on this. They're not gonna go away until they hear from him. He can't ignore this anymore. This is in his front yard. This is his city as long, as well as our city. And the federal government have resources that they can mobilize. Legal resources that, you know, we don't, we can't access ourselves right now. We have to use every tool available in a toolbox in order to bring this to a successful and peaceful closure and get our city back into a peaceful mode. Everybody's on the breaking point. We have COVID. We're worried that this, you know, that everybody who's unmasked and what, and forcing others to unmask are gonna be, this is gonna be a super sprinter event whether they're outside.
Okay, again, so everybody unmasked and everybody forcing those unmasked. Let me tell you something. Every time I see them downtown and I see somebody with a mask come up against one of the unmasked. First of all, they try to avoid them like they got the fucking plague, like they, they're, they're still like boxed in their fucking brain. They have no fucking idea what, what's going on in reality. They're, they're, they're so cooped up, listening to legacy news. They have no fucking clue. But anyways, she's going on on saying they're being harassed. They're not being harassed. People are telling them you don't need to wear your mask. And then the people wearing the mask turn around and start freaking the fuck out, telling everything is all our fault and shit because we're not wearing masks. What in the fuck do you think is going on? Do you think the world collapsed? It's been falling apart for the past fucking two years and we've been here for a week or two weeks. And you think everything is our fault? Like this is the problem. The government has brainwashed people. We need to change everything. We need to rebuild the government from the fucking bottom because too many of these corrupt politicians don't care about your civil liberties. They care about them. They care about their money. They care about them. They care about their constituents and they care about them. There ain't no you and fucking me, just them, them and them. Let's keep going here.
Either not. There's children down there. There's a newborn baby down there in a truck.
That's right. There's a newborn baby down there and her concern that the baby's down there. But she signed off, the whole fucking council signed off on those cops taking the fuel away to keep that baby warm.
This is unconscionable. I respectfully ask that you do everything in your power, Chair, to pull all the powers to be together in order to come up with a concrete plan to end this.
As a police board, I think that we have heard that we need more help and more resources and we need the assistance of the federal and provincial governments to do their part. What I'm not going to do is tell the prime minister how to do his job. And I, I'm sorry, but I'm not sure that meeting with terrorists is something that he's going to do and I'm not.
Not gonna tell him how to do his job.
So now Diane Dean has now referred to the convoy as terrorists. Fucking terrorists, are you kidding me? So now these people that are peacefully protesting and feeding the homeless and all that down there, literally taking care of all these blocks that vehicles can't properly access to whether change garbage cans or whatnot. That's all being done by the blue collar workers down there doing the strike, or not the strike, sorry, the protest. So yeah, so now your city council, the people that you voted to protect you and deal with situations like this, with a head on their shoulders, not in a big panic, fucking need a Prozac because I did an eight ball of coke last fucking night shit, like this Carol Anne fucking Meehan psychopath. Diane Dean don't give a shit either. She wants you to lose all your rights. She also wants to bring in the military. She's just more composed about it because she didn't do a fucking eight ball the night before. So let's keep going.
Those decisions, but I would ask both the federal and provincial governments to use the levers of power that they have to assist us to bring this under control.
As the liaison on women and gender equity, I can't help but notice the effect on women and people whose genders make them more vulnerable in a volatile situation. I know that women in cornerstone homeless shelter who've been hospitalized because of the stress of the constant noise and of, of the, of the inability to sleep, afraid to go outside and people accosting them on the street, telling them to take off their masks. And the situation with the shepherds of Good Hope had protesters trying to take food from the homeless at their shelter. I also know the gender diverse people who have been aggressively screamed at on the streets simply because they have a pride flag on their backpacks. They have, they have to choose between going to work in fear or staying hostages in their home.
Okay, now this one is quite special because now apparently you have a woman in the women's shelter. And let me tell you, I've known probably about just under a dozen or so women that have been in those shelters and they are fucked up. Now we're not just, some of them may be from, you know, a damaged relationship and may have been in some kind of violent situation. But most of them are fucking opioid addicts. Okay? So we're probably talking about somebody who's flipping the fuck out on drugs already. And the slightest little noise is magnified by all those drugs. And they're literally going crazy because of good old Uncle Pharmaceutical providing the best drugs possible, creating the most damage possible in society, all at your dollar backed by your government. That's right. Didn't you know most of the research done onto those drugs you paid for and you still have to pay for it? Yeah, it's fucked up, ain't it?
Thank you, Your Worship. This, this motion simply is asking that we examine a possible tool that would give us more authority. We, we haven't, at this stage of the confrontation protest downtown, we haven't asked for any additional powers to step in and to take any decisive actions. But I'm not saying that that's an oversight, but I would like us to take a look at what we could possibly avail ourselves of if we should need it. And that is the Emergencies Act. This is federal legislation that is, could be enacted in a situation like we're facing right now. It authorizes the taking of special temporary measures to ensure the safety, the security during an emergency. And we are facing an ongoing threat. We're seeing that these protests and confrontations are springing up across the country. I think it's a good idea for us to examine if what we could avail ourselves of here would make, make sense, maybe here and elsewhere in the country. Just some of the things that we could see here, the authority to regulate traffic within specific areas. This will give us the power to distribute essential services elsewhere. Emergency payments, another one, or, you know, provide fines of up to $5,000. I, I'm not saying that we ask for the power to enact the Emergencies Act, but I would like us to explore whether or not this could be a possibility. That's all I'm doing with this motion. Thank you.
So a question to our city solicitor or deputy Bell. I'm not familiar with the, the Federal Emergencies Act. Is this one step towards calling in the army? Is this what's required? I'm not clear on what we would be voting for and what the implications are for this particular.
Can I just say that this is not the War Measures Act? This is, this, that was, you know, take it off the books. But this is, this is a step down from that. It is not as, as a tough. There is very little mention of military, but it does give them more power. So I would assume that there would be that ability.
Yeah, I just, I'm not comfortable because I don't know what the implications are. So Mr. White and then Mr. Bell, Deputy Chief Bell, is this needed? And maybe you can give us some clarity as to what the powers are of this act?
Mr. Mayor, I would defer to Deputy Chief Bell in terms of whether it provides any additional authority. I would note that the Federal Emergencies Act, I think, and there are, there are a number of sections. The one I think that's likely most applicable would be the declaration of what's called a public order emergency. Does provide additional authority in the federal government to, to make orders regulating certain things, public assemblies and things like that. I would note that the Federal Emergencies Act can be invoked only where the scope of the emergency extends beyond the borders of one province and requires consultation with the attorney general of any of the provinces affected. So it tends to be a, certainly it would be a slow process. I understand that those, those discussions are comprehensive and largely directed at ensuring that the, the emergency that is sought to be addressed exceeds the capacity of the province to deal with. I would know, in the event that council is seeking the authority in somebody, it would not be the authority in the municipal council. I would note that the, the powers that are available to the federal government under their own Emergencies Act are largely replicated in the Provincial Emergencies Act. And, you know, as I said, you know, that was the legislation that the, the provinces relied on to enact orders to, to address the COVID pandemic, for example. And I think in the grand scheme, the, the federal government has certainly demonstrated a reticence from involving itself. We heard that earlier today. And just on the last point, the, the declaration of an emergency, whether it be federal or provincial, is, is really not a step towards the calling out the military. That would be under the, presumably under the National Defense Act, which involves the, essentially a petition or requisition by the attorney general of the province to the federal government, the Minister of National Defense, to assist the local authorities, the civil authorities. And again, I think the, the federal government has been, has been quite clear that it is not in a position, certainly as things stand to, that they are considering invoking anything that would, that would see the deployment of the military in the city of Ottawa.
And Deputy Chief Bell, is this required? Do you need this at this point in the occupation?
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in our review of all the different options we had, this is something we did briefly look at.
Okay, so now we're just gonna, I let this run on for a little bit because I was just getting a little mad. I won't lie to you. I walked away from the computer. So now I want you to, you just heard 12 a's and 12 nays. So that means half of the council voted to try to bring in the military to take out the protesters. You guys can actually watch this footage. I cut that part out because goddamn, this is really long and boring to watch. But you'll see that they actually mentioned the names and you can tell which ones want to take away your civil rights and which ones don't. And we really, really need to consider cleaning house. Because any politician that is against our civil liberties should not be in that position. You know what's happening is these politicians are in it to get rich and I think we need to do some serious pay cuts in the government. Like first of all, why is even any single one of them making more than 100 grand a year? Because they're not doing more than six grand a year's worth of work. So why give them 160 or 210 or 190? It doesn't make no fucking sense. We need to reevaluate what value these people already have, really have. And I tell you, it's not what we're paying them. So let's keep going.
Provided a full list yesterday of the resources we believe that we need and this wasn't a piece that we included in that.
So we'll, we'll go to a vote, but councillor Meehan, would you wish to withdraw it? Because there does not seem to be the, the request from our professionals in the police department.
I would just like to clarify, I'm not asking that this be enacted. I would like us to have, to have, to discuss and examine. At some point, maybe this could be requested. We are seeing a lot of different provinces being involved, getting involved in protests and there's convoys crossing provincial lines. That there may be a time. I would just like us to be prepared. That's simply, that's simply what I'm asking.
Okay, with the will of council to allow councillor Menard's vote?
Gary.
Of course.
Then that would be 12 yays, 12 nays.
So that loses. All right.
I would be happy to do that, Your Honor.
Okay, so bylaw is being too pussyfooted. Bylaw has to adhere to bylaw regulations.
I have it. Can I just say something briefly before I introduce it?
Yep, sure. Go ahead. You've got your five minutes.
Um, just actually, one question has to do with the injunction, the noise injunction. You see all over Twitter that people are being urged not to respect the injunction and to continue to like blowing horns again tonight. There's nothing to suggest that they will adhere to it, except that, you know, when we get an injunction, I think it's extremely important that we enforce that injunction as stiffly and as toughly as we possibly can. Otherwise, it's, it's useless to even go that route. So I would hope that the police tonight are prepared to clamp down really hard on anyone who, you know, violates that injunction. Also, I would, I would respectfully suggest that bylaw is being way too pussyfooted around the trucking, the trucks that are downtown.
Pussyfooted. Bylaw has to adhere to bylaw regulations. And a protest really changes bylaw regulations, especially when it's the front of the parliament where protests are meant to take place to create changes within the government. And what is with her saying pussyfooted? That's a little fucking rude. Isn't that a little racist? Huh, bitch?
Waiting to investigate who owns the trucks. That's just, that, you're just wasting time. Councillor Flurry suggested that we ticket anyway. I think we go ahead, we take it anyway. You send those tickets, one a day for a maximum amount to the owner of that transport truck. Don't waste time. Don't, you know, let's, let's not be as nice as you want, as we obviously have been. We gotta do what's necessary and that's just ticket away. Ticket, send it by mail. You don't have any confrontation with those, with the truckers who are causing all the trouble and only that. Get the license plates of all those trucks that are running through the neighborhoods and do the same damn thing. Okay?
Okay, so now what she's saying is if you drive. Okay, so now what she's saying is if you drive around and you honk in. Um, um, in support of the Freedom Convoy, you are now to receive a ticket. But I ain't fuck all, man. I got video of an eighty year old man being thrown to the goddamn ground. Oh, and thank you all for you big channels stealing my fucking video without my permission, huh?
Here's my motion. Um, and this is seconded by councillor McKennie, by the way. Whereas Ottawa is the capital city of Canada and as such should have the necessary legislative powers and funding to ensure the peace and security of the city of Ottawa. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, the Federal Emergencies Act was passed into law. Whereas the Emergencies Act sets out procedures by which emergencies and public order threats are present. And whereas the governor and council, that could be the uh the a member of the provincial legislature summoned with the city. Would be empowered to make orders and regulations concerning the threat following the position provisions of the act. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Ottawa enter into discussions with the federal Minister of Public Safety. To determine whether the Emergencies Act can be invoked at this time. Um, we this in this piece of legislation was passed specifically for uh an. An event like this. Um, so I think that we have to explore if this would give us the tools. And it would get the federal government to come on board. I'd also like to ask if we have given the protesters. A deadline, a firm deadline, that they must be leaving the city by noon Tuesday or six o'clock on Wednesday. Or something's gonna happen.
Wow, okay, so give a deadline or something is going to happen. Okay, do you guys even? Comprehend how incredibly malicious she is against Canadians exercising their right. To free speech and the right to protest. And it's a peaceful protest. We gotta remember this. She keeps saying crimes and shit like that. Where are they? The officers did seven arrests on the weekend and one of them was the old fucking man that I videotaped. You know what I mean? Like this. Seven arrests. At all times, there's like twenty thousand people down there. Well, maybe not in the middle of the night because they get they they actually sleep too. That's another thing too. Honks, the horns going off in the middle. The horns are not going off in the middle of the night. The truckers also sleep at night. That's what people do at night, especially truckers because they're daytime workers. You know what I mean? Like a business is not open at three o'clock in the fucking morning, Mumu. Like this is one wild, wild cat, but you know, guys, I won't lie. I save the best for last. Wait until you hear this.
We could fill the armory building next to City Hall with riot with geared up riot police. Just have them sit there. They don't have to do anything. It's maybe the suggestion of a threat, which is what uh Premier Legault has been doing. That actually gets something working. It gets something going. Um, give them a deadline. See who leaves.
To scare us, isn't that? Wow, so put on riot gear to scare us. Isn't that intimidation? Isn't that a form of threat? And then she just said, deal with them? What in the fuck does that mean? You're gonna send out hitmen? Like what the fuck does that mean, you bitch? So let's fucking keep going. I'm sorry, guys, but this may be the only video like this I can do because um. My blood pressure is to the point where it may actually give me a heart attack. So let's finish this off. Um, and uh and then after that, I'm gonna have to go uh take an aspirin because I might end up in the hospital on this one.
I'm 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 clearly frustrated along with everybody, uh, but I think the time for for being nice has passed. Um, I'll leave it there, but I I would I would clearly suggest that. We have to start taking some serious measures in into consideration and the. Emergencies Act that currently exists within the federal uh government is uh one of the roots and one of the tools that we should examine. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
So again, the emergency act, so she's referring to try to keep getting the military come in and take out the fucking. Man, this is ridiculous. She keeps referring to them as terrorists. You know, if you call in the fucking military, calling those people terrorists, they're gonna come in and they're fucking gonna kill everyone. And then what? You just created civil war on the doorstep of the goddamn parliament against peaceful protesters? That are not willing to leave because you're not willing to listen? This is all her agenda, what she's upset about. It's not about her. She works for us. It's not about her. It's about you and me and she ain't got fuck all to do with it. Unless it's something good for us or else why the fuck are we even leaving her in the council? I'm telling you guys, we need to clean house. The city council's gotta be one of the first things to clean after dropping the fucking. Liberal governments out of the fucking parliament after we liquidate them and this psychopath. Has to be the first to go and Diane Dean, although she keeps her composure, is right side by side with her because nothing. Nothing that these people want to do can happen unless Dean signs off on it. And if you guys watch the full thing, Dean is against. Every single little malicious thing, no matter how big or small it is, and it's completely against. Completely against anything having to do with a peaceful resolution. And not just that, Mr. White keeps referring that to her over and over and over and over again, that he's not willing to do any. Goddamn thing unless it resolves in peaceful resolution. That's why, if you noticed, she didn't really fucking talk to him at all today, did she? Alright, everybody. This is Mark Etour for Too Far Gone Media. I'm telling you, we need to clean house. And uh Googly Eyes here has to be the first one to go. Alright, love you all.